Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners meeting for November 16, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with Agenda Item 1A roll call. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Kerners.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll turn now to Agenda Item 1B and C, invocation and pledge allegiance led by Commissioner McBernard, if you'll please rise.
Before we begin our business at hand, let us ask, give voice to our sincere gratitude to the divine for allowing us to reach this day with the abundant blessing that our great community has been bestowed. Let us pray that with sacred guidance from the Almighty for our decision-making, we may continue to work for the betterment of all. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. We're going to move now to Agenda Item 1D, election of the county mayor. But before we do that, we'll just take a moment to allow myself to take a point of personal privilege to thank my colleagues on the Board of County Commissioners for your support during my time during a very difficult period and chapter in this county, and particularly the county administrator and her staff, our emergency management team, Bill Johnson, who has retired, and Michelle Blakeney is now in charge over there, our public affairs. There was one of the key issues during the penancy of this pandemic was communicating with our community, a very large and diverse community, and Lisa did a heck of a job in helping all of us communicate effectively, and greatly appreciate that. Captain Krivda and Lieutenant Miller and their men and women in uniform for the safety and security and protection that you've provided, not just the board but members of the public during some very important but contentious dialogues in this chamber, and to the state governor, Governor DeSantis, and leaders in the state government for having open lines of communication and for allowing us to work with them hand in hand to get the resources that we've needed over the last two years, and most of all, citizens of Palm Beach County for getting through this chapter of our history together. I'm very proud of what the community has accomplished together, and particularly the contributions and attitudes and perspectives of the members of the public, and of course, my family and friends, and particularly my staff that I work with every day, and Dave Bernhardt, Dan Ackerman-White, and Catherine Suhar. It's been an honor of a lifetime. I'll keep this very short. I've had ample opportunity to speak from this dais and will in the future, but it's been an honor of a lifetime to serve with each and every one of you during this difficult time, and I look forward to continuing that spirit of cooperation and bipartisanship into the future. I think I'm supposed to give a gift here now. You recall, the last one was some masks. I don't think everyone was...
There's my gift right there.
And the Bernhardt. You can't forget the Bernhardt poster, but let me grab the gifts. Joe, I got to get you one. I apologize. Wouldn't let you be up here. Oh, thank you, sir. I didn't wrap those. Goodness. I was going to say. All right. So the masks were something that were very useful at that moment in time, but looking forward, I'd rather us look forward from this point in time, and something that I'm very excited and proud about is the future of this county with the University of Florida going to be present, God willing, in Palm Beach County. So it's Gatoropoly. I thought that was appropriate, given our contributions to the future of education in this county, the University of Florida, and the generations of our children and children as children that will go. So thank you very much for the support in the University of Florida. Thank you, Dana, for coming up with this idea and making it happen, and thank you, everybody. It's been an honor of a lifetime, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. So with that, we'll go to Commissioner Weiss and Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to just let you know, you know, how much I appreciated your leadership over the last two years, very, very difficult circumstances, and I just can't thank you enough, your steadfast hand in dealing with things that we could have never imagined a few years ago, coming to rest on us, and you have led this board and this county. You know, I just can't say enough nice things to you because we, it's a big debt of gratitude we all have for you, and I'm really proud to have been able to serve with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Commissioner McKinley?
Well, first, it's really fun to have a gator on one side and a hurricane over here on the other side. We're one for two, and Mr. Mayor, I look forward to beating you at Gatoropoly Thanksgiving Day weekend with my Knowles, but I think that's fantastic.
Don't beat me too hard, please.
I just want to say thank you. And much like Commissioner Weiss just mentioned, it's been a very difficult time for Palm Beach County, and you could have backed away from the challenge, and instead you stood tall and you got the support of your board to allow you to continue the leadership through the pandemic, and that's not an easy thing to do. You took a lot of political hits, and you took a lot of personal hits, and I know that people were following you around town and taking pictures of you and posting them on social media when you were trying to enjoy a few minutes of downtime to clear your head, and it's very unfortunate that we have to deal with that sometimes, but I want to thank you. I think you and I have shown that you can disagree at times and still work together for the betterment of Palm Beach County, and that you can still be friends despite not always seeing eye to eye on issues, and I really have a tremendous amount of respect for you. I look forward to watching what you do your last two years on the commission and what you do in the future, but I really just want to thank you for stepping up to the plate and leading unprecedented two-year term as mayor. You've been a good friend and a good leader.
Likewise. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Clerk and Comptroller Bruzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We say in the Coast Guard, Semper Pratis, always ready, and I can't think of anybody that embodied that more over the past two years than you, because, boy, were you ever ready. Thank you for everything that you've done to be the face and the leader of the county through this really extraordinary time, and as Commissioner McKinley alluded to, it says a lot to earn that second term, and it is truly historic, and a lot of people are grateful and thankful for your service. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you, my friend. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I've known you in the state legislature, and I saw that you were a rising star, and then I watched you mature here as a county commissioner, and then during extraordinary times, we needed you again as mayor, and those extraordinary times of COVID-19 really brought forth an extraordinary leader such as yourself. You sacrificed your personal time. I know your dog is going to be very happy that you're going to have more time with him, and I know that your personal life was probably sacrificed, but that's what it takes to represent not just your constituents, but your constituents grew to the entire 1.5 million residents of this county. Your legacy will be how you led Palm Beach County through one of the worst pandemics in our lifetime, and you did a remarkable job. I look forward to looking forward to your continuing rising star, hopefully in the political arena, as we all watch you, as you grow into more leadership roles. Thank you for leading us, and it's going to be wonderful to see you rise again. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. As my colleagues have all said before me, we do thank you for your service, and thank you for your service for everything you've done before you got here, because it's not easy being a police officer, being an attorney, being an elected official, so from my heart to your heart, thank you.
Thank you, my friend. Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Mayor, I, again, I thank you, as your colleagues are saying thank you, for everything you've done over the last two years. This is a delicate balance as a mayor of this body. We all work together. We're a team, and I think we've demonstrated that we can work as a team, and even in the face of an adversity like the virus that we've had to deal with over the last two years, we may not always have agreed, but we all work together as a team for the betterment of this county, and you were that leader that got us through the pandemic in real positive fashion, and I thank you so much for that leadership.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And our county attorney.
As someone who has worked with you and representing the county attorney's office in general, I would like to talk more about who you are versus what you have done, because who you are has shown out very loudly to us. You are a person of great determination. You are a person of great vision, and you work hard, and if people do realize how many hours you have put in, when you have an opinion, you are not afraid to voice it and to make it known, but you do have an ear to listen when strong arguments can be made, and I think it says a lot to where our county is today because of the leadership that you have brought and your character, and everyone can respect that and follow someone who has the kind of character that you do. So thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, county attorney. All right, well, that was, oh, the speaker. I almost got done without recognizing you.
Not going to let you do that. Do we have the video ready?
Yes.
Palm Beach County Mayor Dave Kerners, representing District Green, and at the center of the dais for the Board of County Commissioners for the last 735 days, two years, one pandemic, and overseeing the 1.5 million residents. Robust conversations on the dais with colleagues, to ensure that stakeholders have the best representation of decisions and policies in place. Cool mind, clearer vision. Covering COVID-19 from the beginning, the EOC activated to Level 2 for 443 days, almost 50 press conferences, masks, social distancing, COVID education compliance, businesses, testing, and now vaccinations. Meeting with the governor led to this, nearly 1 million people in Palm Beach County have had their shots, including Mayor Kerners, unfounded role on April 13th, getting his first dose. Palm Beach County hosted the Tokyo Summer Olympic Baseball Qualifier in the ballpark of the Palm Beaches, making a strong economic impact, eight teams, personnel, and fans. One county mayor working with city and state county chair, James, from the University of Forbes, Palm Beach County.
What happened to the video? Mayor, I will replay this.
You don't have to replay it, believe me.
I don't know what happened to the sound. No, this is, we want to present you with it, but while they're fixing the sound, I'd like to thank you for your leadership, your vision, being a team player with us during some of the most challenging times. You were there to answer calls from me at night, during the day, weekends. You never failed to call back holidays. You were even keel when things were very turbulent, and you listened, as Denise stated. We could make our arguments with you, and we gel like a team. Your support of myself and staff is greatly appreciated, and I'd also like to thank your staff, Big Dave, Dana, Catherine, for also working with us to give us heads up on what was going on so we could resolve the issue before it became, escalated to a level that was unnecessary. So I have to thank your staff as well, because they've definitely been there with us, and we wish you a little relaxation since you won't be the mayor anymore, but we definitely appreciated your leadership during this timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a highlight of mine, working directly with you. I hope you know that. Radini?
So I'd also like to give you a little token from staff, as well as a plaque of your timeframe over the last 700-plus days, and so...
They are some beautiful cufflinks with the county insignia and seal on it. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you, guys. That was the 15 most kind but awkward minutes of my life, so we will move swiftly to the election of the new county mayor, who I wish the best of luck and the easiest of times, but whoever he or she may be, I know they will have the full support of this board. So I'll turn it over to our clerk and comptroller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, members of the county commission, county administration, and community members in the audience and watching at home. It is my honor today as clerk of the Circuit Court and comptroller for Palm Beach County to administer this portion of the meeting until the new mayor is appointed. At this time, I would like to open up the nominations for mayor. Are there any nominations? Mayor Kerners.
Thank you, Clerk Bruzo. I'd like to nominate for county mayor, Vice Mayor Robert Weinroth.
Commissioner McKinley, for an honorary second.
Yes, even though it's not required, I would like to second that nomination and close nominations.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, the nominations for mayor are closed. Congratulations, Mayor Weinroth. I now turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Clerk Bruzo, and thank you, everybody, for your confidence and your support. I'm going to open up nominations now for vice mayor, and I'm looking for nominations at this time.
I will nominate Greg Weiss.
I have a nomination for Greg Weiss. And anybody else want to make a nomination? I see no other lights lit, so we'll take that as a appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Vice Mayor Weiss. I think instead of recessing, let's go into the Solid Waste Authority meeting quickly, get that out of the way, and then we can do a quick recess and reorganize up here. Do we have the clerk from the Solid Waste Authority?
Okay. Okay, my legal counsel has informed me that for legal purposes, I'm going to recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and we are reconvening now as the Solid Waste Authority, which at the moment, I'm still chair, but I'm going to hand over the meeting to our executive director and clerk to run the election for the new chair.
Ms. Vassalotti will be handling that business.
We'll do the roll call. Mayor Weinroth.
Present.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner Kerners.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
We have a quorum. The floor is now open to nominations for the Solid Waste Authority Board Chair. Do we have any nominations? Okay.
I'd like to nominate Vice Mayor Weiss for the position of chair.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed, and Vice Mayor Weiss has been selected to serve as the Solid Waste Authority Chair.
Thank you.
So I guess next, first order of business next is going to be the election of the vice chair. Are there any nominations? Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Maria Sacks as the vice chair of the Solid Waste Authority Board.
We have a nomination for Commissioner Sacks. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed, and Commissioner Sacks, you are now the vice chair of the Solid Waste Authority. Congratulations. And next, we are going to need to fill the position of secretary for the Solid Waste Authority, and I see a hand down at the far end of the dais. Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Maria Moreno.
All right. Are there any other nominations? We have a nomination for Commissioner Moreno. Hearing none, nominations are now closed, and welcome as secretary for the Solid Waste Authority, Commissioner Moreno. Congratulations. With that, do you have any comments, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, I would just like to thank Mayor Weinroth for his services, chair of the Solid Waste Authority over the past two years. It's been a real pleasure working with him, and your leadership has been greatly appreciated, and congratulations to the other officers who've been nominated today. The only other matter of business I have is it's my intention at this point in time to cancel the December board meeting due to the lack of business and to, that would mean the next regular board meeting would be scheduled for February, if that's okay with the board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and with that, we will adjourn as the Solid Waste Authority.
Very good. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break as things get reorganized up here. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break as things get reorganized up here. Okay. All right. We're going to move on to public hearings. That's on page forty of our agenda. Okay. Item four A one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weiss. We have a motion to receive and file seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed. Show that as passing seven to zero. We now are going to move to the consent agenda. Commissioner Kerner, do we have any comment cards for those items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm looking for anybody on the dais who might have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda. I'm seeing no lights come up. I'll look for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed. That's approved, seven to zero. We're going to move on to public hearings. That's on page forty of our agenda. Okay. Item four A one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weiss. We have a motion to receive and file seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed. That's approved, seven to zero. Okay, we'll move on to four A one. And we have before us Assistant County Administrator Bolton.
Thank you, congratulations, Mayor. This item requests your adoption of an ordinance, of the Palm Beach County Ordinance for Housing and Places of Public Accommodation. Here at the table, I have the Director of the Office of Equal Opportunity, Pamela Garié, and Chief Assistant County Attorney, David Adi. And Pamela, if you could just briefly summarize the changes you're proposing.
Very good.
The changes is to more specifically provide for the Director of the Office of Equal Opportunity to authorize the filing of a civil action and to amend certain definitions. Specifically, it is to allow for complainants, respondents, or aggrieved persons to elect a civil action and removes the provision that talks about a complainant having to affirmatively request an administrative hearing.
Very good. Does anybody have any comments? Or do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, item four A one.
Okay, I have Vice Mayor Weiss has made a motion to approve. Commissioner Kerner has made the second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed. That is approved by seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. That's five A one.
Yes.
Continue. Oh, Commissioner Weiss, do you want to?
Do we need a presentation on this?
Does anybody want a presentation?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move item five A one A and B for approval.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Sax. All in favor, all opposed. Show that approved, seven to zero. All right, we'll be out of here by ten thirty. Okay, this is my favorite item on the airports. As I've said many times before, the only reason this is here is because of our legislature. Yes, Commissioner Kerner?
My apologies, Mr. Mayor, I'm adjusting to my new position. David Tolssus in public comment on five A one, I had missed that.
Is that, does he want to be heard?
I'm right here.
Okay, very good. I'm sorry that we overlooked your comment, and we certainly can recast our vote if something changes our mind.
Not needed. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is David Tolssus. I'm with the law firm of Weiss, Sirota Health and Co., and Bierman. I want to appreciate the county commission's vote of support. Look forward to working with your staff on this very worthy endeavor in serving the citizens of Palm Beach County. Have a great day. Congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, as I was editorializing, this is an item that's before us because the Florida Legislature feels that these are items that cannot be handled other than on a regular agenda. I'm going to look for a motion to approve. I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sax, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. Seeing no further comments, I'm going to see seven to zero as approved. Thank you very much, Ms. Beebe. Okay, we have taken five C one off of the agenda. All I'm going to say to our county administrator is, please help our building department as quick as you can. Moving on, we are now going to recess. That was quick. Recession as the Board of County Commissioners and convene again as the Environmental Control Board. As the Environmental Control Board, we are going to look at item six A one, which is a motion to approve a reappointment of one member of the Environmental Control Hearing Board. Do I have a motion to approve? A motion approved by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Sax. Seeing no comments, all in favor, all opposed. Show that as approved, seven to zero. We will adjourn as the Environmental Control Board and reconvene as the county commissioners. And I'm now going to look for commission district appointments. I'm going to go from left to right. Commissioner Sax, you're first up.
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sax. Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno?
Actually, I have one, and it's a name you all probably know. I would like to appoint Carol Roberts to the Citizens Committee on Airport Noise.
I've heard that name before.
She's a doll and wants to be involved. And we had an opening, so I asked her if she would, and she said yes.
Wonderful. And Vice Mayor Weiss has seconded your motion. Is there any comment? No comment? Show that as approved, seven to zero. Very good.
I served on that board for ten years.
Any other appointments, Commissioner Moreno?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
None.
Okay, Vice Mayor Weiss?
None.
Okay, and I have none either. All right, let's move it on. Time for staff comments.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Board. At our last meeting, we, there was discussion on the mask requirement for our buildings, county-owned and leased buildings. I did inform you that we were tracking, and I was working with the Department of Health, Dr. Alonso, as well as looking and following the CDC guidelines. I'm here to tell you that our, the county is doing very well. The state overall is doing well. We've moved to moderate, and we have been in moderate for about a week and a half. I told you that after two weeks of being in moderate and being below the daily positivity rate of five percent, which has been for about five weeks now. So effective to date at eleven fifty-nine PM, facial covering policy will be repealed. We will still be strongly recommending that employees, visitors, and interested parties continue to wear our facial coverings, practice social distancing, and becoming vaccinated. We still need, the virus has not left. I think all the efforts that we have put in place keeps our businesses open, it keeps our governments going, and our employees and families safer. And so we want to continue to recommend that people wash their hands, wear their masks, and become vaccinated if possible. So we will move forward with that. In addition, a bit of really good news, that is good news on the mask for the people that really want to get out of them, but it also is optional for individuals that want to stay in them. We must be mindful that we've got people in our community, loved ones, that cannot take the vaccine, and so we have to protect them as well.
With respect to the constitutional officers, they'll make their own decisions.
Constitutional officers will make their own decision. And so that's where we are. I think that we're kind of all pretty much in sync, except for when it comes to very close contact. I do know I've got a few divisions, departments, that may still be wearing their mask and just to protect our employees.
Right.
Okay. The last thing I have is S and P global ratings. They actually raised our long-term rating and underlying rating to an A-plus from an A at our general airport revenue refunding bonds. That is huge news for us. And the rationale was that the rating action reflects their opinion of PBI's improved overall credit quality, given the strong recovery in employment this year, and that they believe it will be stabilized near pre-pandemic levels, enhancing rate-making flexibility, and just the overall financial management of the airport. So I want to congratulate Laura Beebe and her staff on their excellent work, and this definitely helps us as we continue to reach out and recruit airlines to come to Palm Beach County. So thank you.
Very good, thank you. County Attorney?
I just wanted to say congratulations, Mr. Mayor. It is going to be a lot of, I was going to say fun, working with you. It's going to be a challenge, and I think that we will work together really well, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate those comments. Okay, Commissioner Sax?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That sounds good, doesn't it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Ms. Baker. Was that eleven AM or eleven PM?
Eleven fifty-nine.
Eleven fifty-nine PM. It gives a little more time for staff to put information out and put posters up, and we'll be ready for tomorrow. But I'm still hoping everybody wears their mask and wash their hands. It's optional.
And I would like to thank you on behalf of, really, all the people of Palm Beach County for leading us through this very difficult time and holding firm, unknowing that the decision that you made over and over again for our security and our protection was paramount over many who wanted you to just make a decision to take the masks off. So with that, I congratulate you. You've gotten us through difficult times, very challenging times, and I look forward to not just removing the mask, but also a very safe Palm Beach County. Thank you.
...this morning, page forty-three, item five C one. We will be bringing that back to the board at our first meeting in December.
Thank you. I'm going to look for a motion to adopt the agenda as it's been amended.
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed, show that as passing seven to zero. We now are going to move to the consent agenda. Commissioner Kerner, do we have any comment cards for those items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm looking for anybody on the dais who might have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda. I'm seeing no lights come up. I'll look for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Kerner, second by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed, the consent agenda is approved, seven to zero. We're going to move on to public hearings. That's on page forty of our agenda. Okay. Item four A one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weiss. We have a motion to receive and file seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed, that's approved, seven to zero. Okay, we'll move on to four A one, and we have before us Assistant County Administrator Bolton.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mayor. This item requests your adoption of an ordinance of the Palm Beach County Ordinance for Housing and Places of Public Accommodation. Here at the table, I have the Director of the Office of Equal Opportunity, Pamela Garié, and Chief Assistant County Attorney, David Adi. And Pamela, if you could just briefly summarize the changes you're proposing.
Very good.
The changes is to more specifically provide for the Director of the Office of Equal Opportunity to authorize the filing of a civil action and to amend certain definitions. Specifically, it is to allow for complainants, respondents, or aggrieved persons to elect a civil action and removes the provision that talks about a complainant having to affirmatively request an administrative hearing.
Very good. Does anybody have any comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve item four A one.
Okay, I have Vice Mayor Weiss has made a motion to approve. Commissioner Kerner has made the second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, that is approved by seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. That's five A one.
Yes.
Continue. Oh, Commissioner Weiss, do you want to?
Do you need a presentation on this?
Does anybody want a presentation? Commissioner Weiss?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move item five A one A and B for approval.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, show that approved, seven to zero. All right, we'll be out of here by ten thirty. Okay, this is my favorite item on the airports. As I've said many times before, the only reason this is here is because of our legislature. Yes, Commissioner Kerner?
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. I'm adjusting to my new position. David Tolssus in public comment on five A one, I had missed that.
Is that a, does he want to be heard, or?
I'm right here.
Okay, very good. I'm sorry that we overlooked your comment, and we certainly can recast our vote if something changes our mind.
Not needed. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is David Tolssus. I'm with the law firm of Weiss, Sirota Health and Co., and Beerman. I want to appreciate the county commission's vote of support. Look forward to working with your staff on this very worthy endeavor in serving the citizens of Palm Beach County. Have a great day. Congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, as I was editorializing, this is an item that's before us because the Florida legislature feels that these are items that cannot be handled other than on a regular agenda. I'm going to look for a motion to approve. I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sacks, seconded by Commissioner Marino. Seeing no further comments, I'm going to see seven to zero as approved. Thank you very much, Ms. Beebe. Okay, we have taken five C one off of the agenda. All I'm going to say to our county administrator is, please help our building department as quick as you can. Moving on, we are now going to recess, that was quick, recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene again as the Environmental Control Board. As the Environmental Control Board, we are going to look at item six A one, which is a motion to approve a reappointment of one member of the Environmental Control Hearing Board. Do I have a motion to approve? A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. Seeing no comments, all in favor, all opposed, show that is approved, seven to zero. We will adjourn as the Environmental Control Board and reconvene as the county commissioners. And I'm now going to look for commission district appointments. I'm going to go from left to right. Commissioner Sacks, you're first up.
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Marino?
Actually, I have one, and it's a name you all probably know. I would like to appoint Carol Roberts to the Citizens Committee on Airport Noise.
I've heard that name before.
She's a doll and wants to be involved, and we had an opening, so I asked her if she would, and she said yes.
Wonderful. And Vice Mayor Weiss has seconded your motion. Is there any comment? No comment? Show that is approved, seven to zero. Very good.
I served on that board for ten years.
Any other appointments, Commissioner Marino?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
None.
Okay, Vice Mayor Weiss?
None.
Okay, and I have none either. All right, let's move it on. Time for staff comments.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. At our last meeting, we, there was discussion on the mask requirement for our buildings, county-owned and leased buildings. I did inform you that we were tracking, and I was working with the Department of Health, Dr. Alonso, as well as looking and following the CDC guidelines. I'm here to tell you that our, the county is doing very well. The state overall is doing well. We've moved to moderate, and we have been in moderate for about a week and a half. I told you that after two weeks of being in moderate and being below the daily positivity rate of five percent, which has been for about five weeks now. So effective today at eleven fifty-nine P. M., facial covering policy will be repeal. We will still be strongly recommending that employees, visitors, and interested parties continue to wear our facial coverings, practice social distancing, and becoming vaccinated. We still need, the virus has not left. I think all the efforts that we have put in place keeps our businesses open, it keeps our governments going, and our employees and families safer. And so we want to continue to recommend that people wash their hands, wear their mask, and become vaccinated if possible. So we will move forward with that. In addition, a bit of really good news, that is good news on the mask for the people that really want to get out of them, but it also is optional for individuals that want to stay in them. We must be mindful that we've got people in our community, loved ones, that cannot take the vaccine, and so we have to protect them as well.
With respect to the constitutional officers, they'll make their own decisions?
Constitutional officers will make their own decision. And so that's where we are. I think that we're kind of all pretty much in sync, except for when it comes to very close contact. I do know I've got a few divisions, departments, that may still be wearing their mask and just to protect our employees.
Right.
Okay. The last thing I have is SMP Global Ratings. They actually raised our long-term rating and underlying rating to an A-plus from an A at our general airport revenue refunding bonds. That is huge news for us. And the rationale was that the rating action reflects their opinion of PBI's improved overall credit quality, given the strong recovery in employment this year, and that they believe it will be stabilized near pre-pandemic levels, enhancing rate-making flexibility and just the overall financial management of the airport. So I want to congratulate Laura Beebe and her staff on their excellent work, and this definitely helps us as we continue to reach out and recruit airlines to come to Palm Beach County. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. County Attorney?
I just wanted to say congratulations, Mr. Mayor. It is going to be a lot of, I was going to say fun, working with you. It's going to be a challenge, and I think that we will work together really well, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate those comments. Okay, Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That sounds good, doesn't it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Ms. Baker. Was that eleven A. M. or eleven P. M.?
Eleven fifty-nine.
Eleven fifty-nine P. M. It gives a little more time for staff to put information out and put posters up, and we'll be ready for tomorrow. But I'm still hoping everybody wears their mask and wash their hands. It's optional.
And I would like to thank you on behalf of, really, all the people of Palm Beach County for leading us through this very difficult time and holding firm on knowing that the decision that you made over and over again for our security and our protection was paramount over many who wanted you to just make a decision to take the masks off. So with that, I congratulate you. You've gotten us through difficult times, very challenging times, and I look forward to not just removing the mask, but also a very safe Palm Beach County. Thank you, Administrator Baker.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Okay, we're going to move on now to Commissioner comments. I'm going to change it up and go from right to left. Commissioner McKinley, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to you, and congratulations to Vice Weiss. That's what he's told us to call him.
Vice Weiss.
I couldn't help it. I just, I want to thank you for highlighting some of your priorities and just had some quick comments on some of them. First of all, on your priority of mental health and substance use, of course, we're still seeing a major increase in our overdose rate, mostly from fentanyl use and drugs being laced with fentanyl. So I appreciate your continued focus on that issue, and I certainly know that your family is very involved in charitable efforts, and just really appreciate everything that your family does in that arena. On the hunger issue, I know that the county has recently issued notice that the food cards are available, particularly as we're coming into the holiday season, and we know that there is a shortage of food supplies for the holiday alone. There is one caveat in that issue, in that reissue into the food cards, and that anybody who's received one before is ineligible to receive one again, and I would just ask that we reconsider that. And there are still families that have been suffering, that continue to suffer, and during the holiday season, if we have extra food cards available that nobody is seeking, that we consider lifting that restriction. On the housing issue, I know that we postponed one of our items regarding PZMB to help them fill sixty positions. I would like to not wait until December if there's any way to add that on as an agenda item to our workshop next week. We need to get that hiring process underway, or we're exacerbating the housing problem ourselves.
May I respond, Mayor? It has not stopped. We have not stopped attempting to fill positions. We will make a special effort. Sixty of those forty positions over the last couple of years, I'm sorry, forty of the sixty positions, if not a little bit more, were added in the last two years during the budget process. The actual issue is that there are bodies just not out there to hire at this point. We are growing our own. We are going to continue to search and move forward. It's the actual H. R. position where it's not going to hold up anything. We can still go ahead and advertise, et cetera, but it's the position, and I don't, I want to make sure that I'm tempering this properly. You're not going to get all sixty of those positions, you're not even going to get half of those positions filled in a very rapid pace, because the people just are not out there. We are growing, we are doing partnerships, making sure that we're hiring people and bringing them in as, under the apprenticeship program, internship programs. That process has not stopped. We're going to continue with that process. We're going to continue with the process of hiring third-party groups. The problem with, the challenge with the third-party group is that they can't hire individuals either. So it's just a, it's a matter of very large volume permitting going on right now. We're exceeding twenty nineteen. So it's not going to stop. The process will continue. We'll make, we can still advertise for the position, et cetera, so it won't stop. There'll be no slowdown in it.
Okay, well, anything we can do to expedite that would be appreciated. The other issue regarding housing, Mr. Mayor, is I've heard from some, and I know that you're engaged in this issue as well, from the domestic violence, our nonprofits dealing with domestic violence, that the, there is a drastic increase in major incidents happening around the county. And I know that the Commission on Women last night looked at looking at a focus area, and we approved an item on consent agenda to help domestic violence victims. But I would like, if we could, do some sort of presentation from AFDA and from our Victim Services on domestic violence and that situation in the county, to see what we might be able to do as a county commission to help.
Without objection, that would be our direction to the county administrator.
And then on your last comment, thank you, Mayor, on your last comment on inflation, I am, I'm getting some feedback from our contracting community. There's an example of a contract, an RFP that was issued in April for a road project in the Lake Worth area on Sixth Avenue. That contract, that RFP was issued in April. The contract was not issued until October fifth, so six months later. The notice to proceed on construction has not been issued yet. The construction costs from the time that RFP was completed until today have increased by five hundred thousand. Similar incidences have happened with bid protests and some stuff outside of county control, but on Seminole Pratt Whitney Road, on Atlantic Avenue, and it's really frustrating to our contracting community. I don't know what all of the circumstances are on those various contracts, but contractors have to hold that price that they've completed in the RFP, but their vendors are only holding those quotes for thirty days, and we need to do something to fix that problem, because they're going to have to eat that five hundred thousand dollar increase now in those construction costs. So if staff could give us some information on what the holdups are and how we can fix those, I think that would be well received by the contracting community. And so, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you for bringing up your priorities for the next year.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'll just add my own two cents into that. And obviously, we know with the inflation and with the supply chain problems, there's a lot of pressure on the contractors, so anything we could do to help them so that they can bid these jobs effectively and not be in a situation where they're losing before they even start would certainly be helpful. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner McKinley. We're going to move on to Commissioner, oh, Commissioner, you're on here somewhere.
I'm on the top.
You're on the top. No, you're, there you are. You have all those things under your name. I didn't see it. Commissioner Marino, you are up.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mayor. Vice, Vice Weiss?
[laughing].
No. Vice Mayor Weiss, congratulations. And Bob, I'm sorry your wife wasn't here today to celebrate with you, but I know Pam does great work in the community, and probably a busy day for her, so look forward to seeing her again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I do have several requests for off-site certifications. One would be, and I, and I'm going to preface this by saying, when we are addressing the community at the climate summit, we have a golf course right here in our county that is an Audubon-certified golf course, one of only five in the country. So I would like to request an off-site certificate of congratulations to Bo Preston, PGA professional at the Osprey Point Golf Course for becoming the recipient of the twenty twenty-one South Florida Section PGA Patriot Award.
Vice Weiss has seconded you.
This is going to stick.
All in favor, all opposed?
It is going to stick. Thank you very much. And I would like to also request an off-site certificate of congratulations to Brittany Ackley, PGA professional on the, at the Don Law Golf Academy for coming, becoming the recipient of the twenty twenty-one South Florida PGA Youth Player Development Award.
Second.
It has been seconded and approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. It's, as I said, we have five golf courses. We do not have a lot of PGA professionals at our golf courses, so when we have ones that do garner awards in our community, it's nice to recognize them. I would also like to request an off-site proclamation honoring the Center for Family Services of Palm Beach County on its sixtieth anniversary.
Second.
Vice Mayor Weiss again seconds. Well, I see no objection, seven to zero, approved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kerner, welcome to being a commissioner.
Thank you.
And you did a great job as mayor.
Feels good to be back in the commissioner's seat.
That's it, thank you.
I don't know, it doesn't sound right after two years.
It's confusing, but we'll get past it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kerner?
No comments, Mr. Mayor, except to congratulate you on your new position. Well deserved. I'm excited to see you lead this county, and we have you back.
Thank you. I do appreciate that, Commissioner Kerner. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate you on becoming mayor and wish you a successful year as the mayor. And I'd like to request an off-site proclamation declaring December first World's AIDS Day.
I'm sorry, what was that?
An off-site proclamation declaring December first as World AIDS Day.
Second. Okay, seconded by Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed, that has been approved unanimously. And thank you for your kind words, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any appointments, but a few comments, if I could. May I make a few comments, although I don't have any?
You may. This is your time.
Thank you so much. Well, I think that the election of today shows that seven to zero, that our board is united in recognizing you as the mayor, and also Greg Weiss as the vice mayor. And I think that it's going to, this really portends a good year for all of us on the county commission, that we work together. We are seven commissioners, we are one county, and we represent the county. And I look forward to working with you, our new leadership, and with the history of our previous leadership, kind of helping us along the way, that we will do great things for the people of Palm Beach County. Thank you, that's my comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sacks. And I keep on looking to my left every time someone says mayor, but I'll, I guess I'll stop, you know, doing that in a couple of meetings. I thank you again very much for your support and for your votes today on my behalf. I also want to congratulate Chair Weiss on taking over the position of Solid Waste Authority, Vice Chair Sacks as the, again, Solid Waste Authority Vice Chair, and welcome Secretary Marino to our leadership of the Solid Waste Authority. I've always thought of myself as king of trash. I will hand that off to Vice Weiss. I want to thank everybody again. I want to thank my wife, certainly, for her support, not only today, but every day. She makes this, doing this job possible. Thank the prince and people out there who are very supportive of what we are doing up here, and it really is a pleasure being up here. And I'm not saying every meeting is pleasant, but this job is really the best job I've ever had, and I really appreciate it. I am going to enjoy being in this, in this seat, at least for the next year, and I thank you for that. I just want to clarify, the county administrator did announce that at midnight tonight, the mask requirement in the buildings is going to be suspended. However, I want to caution people who are going to PBI or people who are going to be using the public transportation system, Palm Tran, that those areas still will require a mask. So if you are going to the airport, because it's a federal mask requirement, we don't have the authority to lift it, and we certainly also don't have the authority to lift it on the, on the public transportation. So please continue to use your mask on the buses and at the airport. On that, I would.
I have my comments.
Oh, I forgot you. That's because I skipped over you, Vice Weiss. Okay, Vice Mayor, it's your turn.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First off, congratulations, Mayor. Well deserved, and I want to thank the board for your selection of me as vice mayor, and I don't expect to, but if need be, I'm happy to step in for our mayor. I would like to give staff direction to bring back a resolution on broadband. It's part of Access sixty-seven, which is the rolling out or increase of broadband throughout the state of Florida, being championed by the Florida Association of Counties. And so I'd like, without objection, to be able to give staff direction to bring that back to our next meeting. And I think we can do it at the workshop.
I think, without objection. Very good.
Thank you. And that's my comment, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Bonlaren, do we have that clip to try again?
Oh, we don't.
Oh, yes, we do.
Please. Palm Beach County Mayor Dave Kerner, representing District Three, and at the center of the dais of the Board of County Commissioners for the last seven hundred thirty-five days, two years, one pandemic, and overseeing the one point five million residents. Robust conversations on the dais with colleagues to ensure the stakeholders have their best representation, decisions, and policies in place. Will mind clear vision. Covering COVID nineteen from the beginning, the EOC activated to a level two for four hundred forty-three days, almost fifty press conferences, masks, social distancing, the COVID education compliance team for businesses, testing and now vaccinations. Meeting with the governor led to this, nearly one million people in Palm Beach County have had their shots, including Mayor Kerner, once on the ball on April thirteenth, getting his first dose. Palm Beach County hosted the Tokyo Summer Olympic Baseball Qualifier at the ballpark of the Palm Beaches, making a strong economic impact, eighteen's personnel and fans. One county mayor working with city of West Palm Beach Mayor Keith James, from the University of Florida, to Palm Beach County. Kerner keeps his vision on the growth of educational opportunities, but the business opportunities are coming too. Dozens of big businesses landing here. Wall Street South is what we're about. Through it all, he highlights the public servants, law enforcement, and first responders, plus the treasures who come to downtown Palm Beach County. A World War II veteran making his way through all fifty states, crusading for frontline nurses, and another one hundred and two-year-old World War II vet from Palm Beach County. He was recently recognized for his service prosecuting war criminals. Thousands of signatures on documents, hundreds of meetings, all free of legal, Palm Beach County. Mayor Kerner, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the board for, again, watching that video. Who is the voiceover for that?
Mayor.
Very well done. Well, that was a very meaningful video, and I, I'm very moved by the words that were said today, so thank you, guys. I really, really appreciate it, and I know it's not my time for comments, but I also wanted to make sure to let Vice Mayor, or my apologies, Mayor Weinroth, to just give you a word of advice, if I can. You are placed in a very unique position, both in government and in life right now. I know you'll do an excellent job, but I do hope you'll take time to enjoy it and have as much fun with it as possible. When you bring that energy to the board, the board brings it to the county and the county employees and throughout the county at large, so we're going to follow your tempo and beat, and we hope you have a good time with it.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, we are adjourned.